Okay.
Okay, I'd like to call the Plan Commission Work Session Meeting to order on Monday, May 3rd, 2021 at 6:01 PM. Janelle, could you please take roll call?
Berto.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Somway, she's not here yet.
Not here yet, she'll be here.
Gretzmerker.
Here.
Mitz.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
And Dash is excused.
Okay, comments, correspondence, and concerns from the public, did we have any correspondence?
No.
Okay, and no one other than Plan Commission and staff is joining us? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I so moved.
Motion by Gretzmerker, second by Ward, all those in favor respond with an "I."
I.
Opposed, carried. Approval of the minute says published. Any corrections? Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve Tuesday, April 13th, 2021 as presented. Motion by Berto.
Second.
Second by Bell, all in favor respond with an "I."
I.
I. Opposed, carried. Item number one, consider a motion to convene into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Stats 19.85 sub 1 sub E to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public properties, the investment of public funds, or conduct other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Motion by Berto.
Second.
Second by Bell, Berto, yes?
Bell, yes.
That's Smucker, yes.
Mitz, yes.
Ward, yes.
Did you stop recording, Janelle?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, that's my chair, if you can hear that, that's.
We're good to go, Janelle?
Uh huh.
Okay, I make a motion to reconvene into open session at 6:05, motion by Berto.
Second.
Second by Ward, Berto, yes?
Bell, yes.
That's Smucker, yes.
Okay, there is no action to be taken, so we will move to item number four. Conducting of a Plan Commission work session at which amendments to the portions of the zoning code, Chapter 66 of the municipal code that pertain to transient lodging in the B1, B2, and B3 districts, as well as conditional use permits in all zoning districts, and the definition section of the zoning code will be addressed. Okay, Bo?
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen, I think this is the best way to do it. We will start at the B1 regulations, work our way through. Okay, can everyone see the screen?
Yes.
Yep. Alright, so what I figured is we'll do what we did with the definitions and just work our way down based off of any editing or any questions and go from there. So for the first one, we went through permitted uses and it looks like there's been some changes in removing some permitted uses in here.
So I, I changed a lot of those, I know that we have talked about this in the past when we did a major rewrite, that, you know, some of this was just kind of ridiculous and redundant on trying to come up with every type of, you know, retail store that there was and some I'm sure we haven't even thought of or that were never in here. So most of them that I took out, I replaced if you, just under retail, under the heading retail general use, I added that, which just, you know, kind of encompasses almost everything that, you know, I, I think we should get rid of.
And Denise, I'm fine with that, this came out on Friday afternoon and weekends are my busiest times, so I only had time to start going through it today. I was curious as to why Dance Studio was going in and I'd really like a bit more time than 72 hours to, to go through this entire list.
Dance Studio was always in there.
But why? I, I mean, I guess that's my question. Why, why so many legitimate businesses were stricken but Dance Studio was left in?
Well, because that, that's a, I struck most general retail, whether it's a bookstore, a camera store, a clothing store, a food store, a craft store, just and replace that with one heading of retail general use. Dance Studio didn't fall under that category, so, you know, that can be up for, you know, discussion if we think that's appropriate in the B1 or not.
Again, I, I would have liked a bit more time to take a look at this and it just, we, we have to remember that Door County is seasonal, so right now with spring, weekends are the time that I, I have very little time to look at, at items like this.
Yeah, I, I worked all weekend too, I did it, I did it last night, yeah.
So we don't have to finalize anything in here, we can just begin the discussion. We have a follow-up meeting already scheduled, so, you know, this will still be available to everyone, so if you want more time, you know, there's gonna be plenty of time before the next meeting to go through this.
And Denise, I appreciate your effort in streamlining this, absolutely, again, I just, I, I just need a little bit more time.
Okay.
So all these changes will just stay from this meeting and just left for discussion. We can just continue to go through it and if anyone has any questions, we can answer it now. If anyone has any other proposed changes, we can talk about it and then like to Mary Kay's point, we can continue the discussion on the B1, B2, and B3 district into the next work session.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna keep scrolling here.
I did have a question, I did delete professional offices and real estate offices and just kind of did general offices for the B1 district, but got a little more specific in, when we get to the B3. Is, is that acceptable for the B1 district, just a general, if you have an office of some kind? Without, you know, defining specifically what, what it is, that's why I highlighted it?
So, did, shouldn't, shouldn't we just be professional offices then?
Yeah, because real estate office would be a professional office and
Okay.
It's just, seems to me it would cover all types of.
All types of offices, okay.
Because if we say real estate offices, then we have to say law office.
Right.
And kind of go down that rabbit hole.
Okay.
No offense to real estate offices, Mary Kay.
None taken.
Okay, so we'll just leave it as professional offices for now.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so retail general uses here.
A question about number 30 is where it's plumbing and heating supplies, does it have to be supplies? Or can it be like a service center, like I'm thinking about Wolf Brothers or does it have to be a place that you can have supplies? I know that they have them, I'm just thinking about.
I, from my perspective, I think plumbing and heating supplies is a separate store and then what you're talking about might be professional offices.
Okay.
Do we need to say plumbing supplies and lumberyard or can we say construction supplies to collapse it down a little more?
Was construction higher up? I know there was construction somewhere.
I think it was a lumberyard, wasn't it?
There's lumberyard at 23.
I don't think there was anything general to construction in the B1 and I would urge.
It was trade, it was trade and something, that's what it was, maybe under T.
Trade in contractor shops.
Yes. Yeah, I didn't really know what that meant. Is that kind of what you're thinking, Lauren?
Yeah, I guess.
Denise, I would think that we should keep that as trade as, it's trade in contractor shops considering the shortage of all trades at this point in time. If someone wants to open a painting office, if someone wants to open.
What I'm suggesting is we collapse it down into a single item, not saying we shouldn't do it, but do we need to have every enumerated use of, for construction supplies or do we care if it's plumbing supplies or if it's a piece of lumber?
Nope.
Well, and that's to Bo's point, it's like it's the difference between retail or like, like a, it said, this is.
Retail, yep.
Right, and so I think about, you know, I know that Anshut's Plumbing, for example, isn't, isn't in our, it's not, it's not Sister Bay, but it's, that's more of a service center where you go and they're, they're not selling the items as a retail, I don't know.
Right, we have Lundquist Plumbing here in the village, also not necessarily selling retail, but.
So yeah.
All I'm advocating for is less items to, to be as, fewer items we can have to our desired result is gonna be better in my opinion.
Yes.
With the exception of the fact that we have a feral gas service office and a Wolf Brothers service office that do not carry building items, so how do, do you feel that your definition, Nate, singularly and severally identifies both of those things?
Well, either we would need to change plumbing and heating supplies to say that service, because that's not what that, that, as I read it right now for 30, and perhaps change that and I, I would consider at least lumberyards and plumbing and heating supplies, that, that should be able to be done into one item. If we need to have a separate one for service centers, I could understand that.
What about trade and contractor retail slash office? Does that make sense?
Sure. Yeah.
But then shops should be supplied, yeah, there you go. It should be supplies and/or retail, so trade and contractor supplies, right?
Yes, yes.
Shop is not like a shop S-H-O-P-P-E, like a retail store, we're talking like where we do our welding shop.
Do we need to define that that's available to the general public and it's not just used in the trade?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
There's plenty of places you don't want the general public in that are gonna be working like that, can you go into Eagle Mechanical?
Sure. In the Sister Bay office, you can, and if they need to show you something, they, they will show it.
But if they didn't want to, was that a use we wouldn't want them?
Well, that's a bad example, actually, so.
So then does that cover plumbing and heating? That that can be removed?
I think so.
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Or do we want to make 23 lumberyards more generic? We call it construction supply store.
Makes sense.
What if we're not using wooden 20s?
Yeah.
I don't think we have to have a store, just construction supply. Well, and we'll have to put it in alphabetical order, so it won't stay at 23.
Yeah, after we edit this, we'll go through and change it.
Okay.
Looking at marinas, where in the B1 would a marina go?
Pretty much nowhere.
I mean, I, I guess if somebody's really dedicated to it.
Hmm, the only place I could see it going just based off of the map would be all the way at the bottom of Sunny Court. Because.
Or Little Sister.
Or Little Sister.
I like it then, that's optimistic, I think we should keep it.
Hmm.
But maybe it really doesn't make sense. If you look at, if you look at the zoning around all the shore outside of the downtown, there would probably be a lot of people, you know, if Fred and Fuzzies would have stayed, you know, commercial, that, that might have been one thing.
Well, technically it still is.
Technically, you're right, technically it still is. Okay, alright, I'm good, we can leave it.
Once again, I don't think anyone's actually going to propose a marina right now, just based off of where things are at and, and what buildings are on the B1 on the waterfront, but. Okay, do you want me to scroll down?
Sure.
Okay, after this, it goes into permitted accessory uses.
I looked each of those sections up where it says C page or, or the, the code number, whatever, and I did not see anything, you know, in those other sections that we would need to change that, in, in my opinion.
Yeah, I did the same thing, I agree.
Why do we set a minimum area? And I know that I was on the commission last time we revisited this, so I might be arguing with myself again.
I love when you do that, Nate. You grow older and wiser.
If you ask a question, you should be open to whatever answer. I really think that we should, we should either remove that or lower it, and I think it's a remove it.
The minimum?
Hmm.
Altogether?
Altogether.
Because if somebody wanted to live in a 400, okay, but what if, and do we, do we care if, let's say it was 350 square feet, which I don't know, maybe some New York apartments are that small.
They're already, they go all the way down to less than 70 square feet.
Oh my gosh. Okay, um, do we care if, let's say, oh, it's a non-transient residential, okay, so it's not for transient, but let's say that they want to rent it out. And do we care if they want to rent it out on a, on a monthly, annual basis, the size of it, if somebody's willing to pay for it?
It's gonna be another housing unit come, coming online and the smaller it is, the more affordable, affordable it's gonna be. At least generally, or it's gonna be really nice if they're gonna get more money for it somehow.
Sure. I wonder, okay, so we changed this in June of 2007, so 14 years ago. Does anybody remember why?
That might have been right before me.
Okay.
I will tell you that you have a couple of different things going on here. County zoning would be in a little bit opposition on this, on accessory residence. An accessory residence has to be 749 square feet of actual living space, but I will tell you that when it says bedrooms two or more, 850 square feet, I could send you examples of landmark units or Scandinavian lodge units that actually you, you would look at them and say, two people can do this just fine as roommates. So I, I think that is certainly adequate, but I do agree with Nate's, you know, idea that you can go down lower, that, I, I mean, that's my only concern is that you, you do get awfully tight under, under 749 square feet.
Some, some influence over that too, somebody's not gonna build it so small they can't live there, but why should, what, what benefit does it have to put that minimum size there?
Right, do we just care about the size of the building and we don't care about the bedrooms?
Well, the county uses storage as the protagonist in this situation. So let's say you have 749 feet of actual living space, that would not include your closet, that would not include your garage, that would not include a storage area off of the back that is a mudroom that they can prove is not a livable space. So you can actually go quite a bit bigger with, with space, and I'm just making these comments because I've been through it so many times with secondary residents in, in county zoning.
I just looked this up, and I Googled this, so I don't know how accurate it is, but a tiny home can range anywhere between 60 and 400 square feet. Their average is usually, the living space is 120 square feet, and we're talking really tiny homes.
I guess I, I will always come back to the sandwich boards. There were some really big unintended consequences and it's real, it's hard to foresee them until it happens, and I'm just, I, but what would be the reason, what would be from a professional planner's perspective, what would be the reason to make to have that minimum area?
I think it just comes down to looking at this, you know, accessory residential uses, one single family dwelling and a non-transient rent, or residential unit. Looking at that, it's really only telling you, you can have one single family house and one accessory residential unit. I think at the time, I think Plan Commission wanted to make sure that these accessory units were nice and not undersized, but realistically now, if, if they're non-transient and they're for rentals on an annual or monthly basis, there's really nothing prohibiting you with today's building, you know, building ideas and, and and the changes in building that would allow this to get smaller.
I can hold on with you, Nate.
Right. Yep.
Most of Sister Bay's residential neighborhoods have restrictive covenants governing the size of any building and/or accessory residences.
Correct, like condo associations or other homeowner associations.
Okay, let's get rid of it then.
Conditional uses. So I know we talked about redlining these conditional uses, but Denise, just to make it easier to read, I did not redline these ones for editing. By the way, Nate, I can see you right there, just in case anyone's curious, that's what it looks like, I can see people editing on the document.
So I highlighted apartments and because I think on Highway 42 versus Highway 57, there's a different feel, there's still a lot of undeveloped land on 57 where we have much more commercial on 42. Now, yes, there are some, you know, open or vacant lots still there where something would happen and that's why I wrote, should this be an overlay district? I don't necessarily want to not have them allowed, but I think there's, I don't know that I would like to see him on Highway 42. You know, we have, you know, part of Garrett's project. We, we hopefully in the future are looking at Marissa Downs's Wida project on 57, near us, the daycare on some acreage there. You know, there's the buildings that Bo lives in, there's Tim Hallbrooks next to it there. I mean, is that where we should concentrate more of the housing and not worry so much, you know, about commercial? Because there's so much more commercial on 42 and try to concentrate and separate them? That's my question.
That would be strictly prohibited in my profession, so I would not even go there. And then secondly, I have seen beautiful apartments in Green Bay directly next to shopping centers and incidentally, the only reason I noticed it, because Tim Hallbrook's sign was up and I asked him about it, it was a pre-three building that had already been signed to a new developer, but it was gorgeous. And I'm thinking specifically of like Capwolfs Land next to, you know, that little strip mall right there. Why wouldn't you want something that is pretty and attractive and well-done? But at the same time, in my profession, I almost cannot even comment that, on that, that's called steering.
Or zoning.
No, moving people to different parts of a community is called steering because you have other things on the other side of the community and you don't want it in a specific area.
Well, then all of zoning is steering.
Take it up with the Supreme Court of the United States, you know? I'm just saying that a well-developed apartment complex in that area would not be out of place in any way, shape, or form, would contribute to the tax base and be consistent with the other uses in the area, specifically because you described Liberty Groves uses going up the hill.
I'd agree with you Denise, that that does make more sense out on that 57 corridor. Ultimately, density is what's going to be our only real shot at affordability, which is something that we need to make sure that the, there's access to do some of those construction in that area, so I would agree that the overlay is appropriate out there.
So we can allow, they can be conditional uses, so what do you, what exactly are you saying, Nate? That they can be conditional uses everywhere in B1, but that they would be per, we could do an overlay district on Highway 57 where they would be permitted?
I, I would say that we would have them be a conditional use in the overlay. That would be my inclination, but I, I I could be talked into something else.
Well, then I think that they could just stay exactly the way that they are, I guess. That they can just be still listed here, I, I just wanted to have a conversation about it, that's all. I mean, we don't need to create an overlay district if we allow them everywhere in the B1 and their conditional uses. It would only be if we wanted to not allow them in the B1 district, but that we would have an overlay where they would be allowed, that, that was my thought process on a, on a conversation.
I think that, I, I guess the more barriers we can remove, the more likely this is to happen. Something like that is to happen, so.
That's true. So we leave it just the way it is?
I mean, I think that to, to have that overlay and then have it be a permitted use would make it more accessible.
Okay. Okay, so then we would want to write an overlay district for the 57 corridor. Okay, so then we would want to write an overlay district for uh the fifty-seven corridor.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, it would be a conditional use on the forty-two corridor in the same zoning district where there's land. So long as it met all conditions.
That's what I'm hearing, yes.
We talked about this five years ago that most people did not want the Highway fifty-seven. Corridor to just be a solid wall. Of attainable housing, apartments, et cetera, et cetera. Now, it is, it it is leaning, it is leaning the the in that direction. But hasn't everyone on this commission said that breaking it up a little bit would be? Maybe appropriate, especially in a tourism area. So do you want to make that area entirely an overlay district? So it makes it more difficult should someone be able to pick up an attainable piece of commercial zoning? In that district and and have it be in the overlay district? I'm not sure exactly what you're proposing by this, so I guess I would just need to hear a little bit more.
Well, it'd still be B-one, so any other any other use in there would would be. Just like any other piece of B-one, but it would be would permit. Apartments in that, correct Denise?
Yeah, I don't have the um, the definition of an overlay district in front of me. Bo, could you bring that up and show me? I I mean, I'm not sure exactly what I would be agreeing to by this.
Everything in the zoning district still applies. The rules and regulations.
So how does it overlay? Where where? I've got my code in front of me. What page?
Well, we only have a couple overlay districts. One is uh the bluff protection. One is um the fast food.
I'm running to grab my hard copy of the code too. I'll be right back.
So we have a residential second dwelling unit overlay district. That's on page ten. We have a wetland overlay district.
We have a Highway forty-two and fort fifty-seven landscape setback overlay district.
Bluff protection.
And how would that setback overlay district play into any of this? I just, I don't think I'm without seeing some language for an overlay district that I'd be willing to. Even entertain um an an idea in regard to this until I.
Well, we would have to write it and then we'd have to write it and craft it and debate it and 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 talk about it as as a separate issue.
Right, but I I mean, nothing, nothing being brought up really helps me right now going through these pages.
Mary Kay, I don't know if this is helpful, but I'm on. I mean, district overlay overlay districts provide for the possibility of superimposing certain additional requirements upon a basic zoning district.
The definition I was looking for. Thank you, Lauren.
Yep, that's on one eighty-three.
So I guess maybe going up a couple hundred feet for a second. If we look down the list and there's congregate housing and there's seasonal employee housing. Are we, should we be looking at all in with the same lens or not?
Well, they all are subject to the same section of the code. Um, and that's why I had highlighted all of them just for just for conversation. And and because they are conditional uses. And that's really the major part of, you know. The whole moratorium.
I wouldn't be opposed to an overlay district if it pertained to vacant land on both forty-two and fifty-seven. Where there is vacant land.
Well, we wouldn't need an overlay district to them.
Right.
If it was all of B-one.
Well, and that, let's say that the, I was gonna call it Shopko, but it's really the Chris property. What if somebody wanted to turn that into an apartment complex?
Or the land next to it between them and Lamperts.
Well, wouldn't they likely just want to go for a rezoning since they're adjacent? Another use there? I mean, they're adjacent to those of the apartments, but I guess the the fewer barriers they have. More likely something like that is to happen.
Right.
Yeah, they'd have to apply for a conditional use or rezoning.
And I think that would be even though the apartments are behind them. What is it? The Glen? Is that what they are?
Lot Estates, yeah.
You know, they, that property was. They come off a field crest. What what are they? What are they currently zoned?
I believe, no, I believe there be one.
So it was a conditional use. Okay, I just didn't remember.
Yeah, I wasn't here for that, but just looking at the map as it stands, which was last updated in twenty seventeen. That's showing me that there be one general business.
Okay.
I believe we rezone that from the quarry. If if you could look into that, but.
It was resumed. When they were proposing that they wa, if that map just hasn't been updated yet. I think it's, I wanna say it's R-two.
That would make sense.
Because it would have been one thing if their access was off of forty-two, but because it came off a field crest. That's probably why we rezoned it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't have any access from forty-two.
And and that field crest access was very hotly debated at the time. So I I think that anything going forward, you know, would be on the Highway forty-two corridor. I don't think we need an overlay district if the conditional use stands as is in the district.
I don't have the benefit of historical context, but I would tend to agree with that. It seems like if if conditional, i- if conditional uses is uniformly applied to all of the. Areas doesn't seem like there's a need.
And that's fine. If if that's a general consensus, I just wanted us to talk about it. Be- because the whole, the whole thing with in the crux of conditional uses. Is basically as long as the petitioners agree to whatever conditions you put on there. It is becomes a per, it's basically a permitted use. That's what Act sixty-seven did to conditional uses.
The way our development going i- is going, excuse me, you you know, a a higher end apartment. To perhaps cater to our aging population that doesn't want a. The the care of taking care of a single-family residence, but realizes that. As of right this second, there is not a condo available anywhere that is under five hundred thousand dollars. Then an apartment may maybe an attractive thing. If a developer could bring in something that was specific and approved by the village. As desirable, I would have no issue with that and that would fall under conditional use.
Okay, all right. Well, then we can get rid of my note about an overlay district then unless. I mean, can you go along with that, Nate? Do you still like the overlay district? What?
I mean, I I guess with Act sixty-seven, it's taken the the teeth out of conditional uses. Now it's. Conditional use isn't that much, isn't what it what it used to be, so I suppose it's not that big of a barrier.
Okay. So we have congregate housing. Which we don't have a definition for.
Yeah, I was looking for that this afternoon and I couldn't figure it out. What is that?
Good question. I mean, I read the section. It's on page thirty-five, the section that that's referring to, along with seasonal employee housing. And storage and related. Which I I don't quite, I don't understand storage and related, but. Nate, or can somebody Google congregate housing?
I just did. Um, oops. Shared housing residents often gather together closely for social leisure or recreational activities, shared dining. And or use of shared equipment such as kitchen appliances, laundry facilities, stairwells and elevators.
Is that a dorm?
A dorm?
Yep, it's essentially a dorm.
Or it's like the houses that the pig rents for their employees.
So it's essentially.
Yeah, but that's a single-family home and everybody gets a bedroom. I mean, I used to rent out rooms in my house. Uh, for many, many years to help pay the mortgage. That was the only way I could, you know, um, afford to to buy a house. Was to have that rental income. So that's a single-family home. I'm not so sure.
In many of those cases though, Dan- Denise, they have turned the living rooms into like dormitories. With bunk beds and everything else.
So in violation of many codes.
Oh, yes, I know, dear, but it's congregate housing at its best.
So I I would be in favor of deleting congregate housing then.
Okay.
If if that's what its definition that you found, I I don't like that definition.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's literally what it is, is just. Yeah, close housing where you're sharing dining and bathroom, laundry facilities, et cetera.
I mean, if people do that in a single-family home, that's one thing.
Okay.
Denise, I'm pretty sure that was not, uh, it was it was not in compliance with ordinances as of the seven or eight years ago. The single-family housing thing, I remember, I don't remember having a change in code. I remember, cause you said, I'm doing this, I've been doing this, this, I'm violating this ordinance, more or less what you'd said. I just thought that was amusing. We're we're talking about that again. I don't know that I would ever. Goodness, I never did anything like that to me, so I would never commit that to public record to say that I did such a thing.
Well, I was considered a boarding house and plus I'm in R-one. Not B-one.
I remember there was something to do with the number of family members according to the state definition of the housing unit. It was.
Yeah, but I was considered a boarding house, which is different.
Okay.
Yeah. So seasonal employee housing under the same section.
To 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 use the keep it tight. Do we care? We drop it out and just say if, wh- why wouldn't you just allow apartments then?
Well, what is the difference between a boarding house and congregate housing?
Yeah.
A boarding house.
It seems to me that congregate housing can be like, um. I'm trying to think of an example, but you can just have buildings that are only bedrooms, but everybody converges into a different building that has the. The shared use facilities.
Almost like a commune?
Like a commune, yeah. I mean, congregate, as we know, literally means for for people to gather. So even like in a single building, you might have rooms like a dorm where every floor has a. A kitchen, but in my mind, you could also interpret that to mean that there are, there's one, like, kind of like the. The condo facilities, I mean, all condos have kitchens, but that there's one center area where there's the pool and the the big kitchen, you know. But everybody else just comes to that. Uh, I don't know.
Wouldn't that be then synonymous with a nursing home? Assistant living facility?
Yeah, is, that's true. Is Scandia congregate housing?
I remember Zeke going on about trying to do some sort of what he was calling a campground. For lack of a better term.
Yes.
Going to have something that would have like a a shared bathroom facility and to try and make it possible for seasonal housing.
Yeah, a campground is congregate housing, just temporary.
That would be congregate housing.
So to answer Mary Kay's question, boarding house is a place in which lodging with or without meals. Is offered for compensation to non-transient guests that provides for less rooms for rent. Is the owner's personal residence and is occupied by the owner during the time of rental.
Thank you, Denise.
Yeah, that 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 would be the definition difference between boarding house and congregate housing. This isn't some, congregate housing wouldn't be someone's primary residence they're renting out.
So yeah, I agree that seasonal employee housing can go away if there's apartments or. Did you say something, David?
I said, cool.
Oh, okay.
I actually wouldn't take that away. I I I would like to hear the argument to take that away.
Why would you say apartments?
Because it's not necessarily, I mean, we we still have structures in this district. That would be appropriate for seasonal employee housing that are not apartments.
Okay, give me an example, Mary Kay.
I am trying to think of one.
Well, and 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 I did listen to the interview that uh Fitzgerald did with the economic development folks. This weekend and, you know, number two on the list was the lack of affordable housing for for workers. Both J-ones and normals. So I guess I, the only reason I got rid of it, I I agree that we need seasonal housing. I just wonder why we could just say that's a subset of apartments. However, is seasonal housing going to be more like dorms?
Well, seasonal employee housing might refer, and there's no definition in our code and there's really, it's it's really vague if you just try and look it up. But to me, a seasonal employee housing really means it's only available during specific seasons where they're needed. So you might have someone who's really only using it through the summer and that's it.
So the Main Street market bought a house for their help and they remodeled it to put in extra bedrooms. Is that seasonal?
Well, if it's eating, it might be considered seasonal housing.
If they're using it seasonally.
Okay.
But it still could be in an R-one residential district and how they use it. It's, it it would depend on the district that it's in, I guess. You know, the um, you know, many businesses up here have purchased homes for their employees. I'll use Michael Dobner from the Boathouse as an example. You know, it's a single-family home. They fill up the bedrooms, two people to a bedroom and and share everything and. It suffices as seasonal employee housing, but it's still a single-family home. It suffices as seasonal employee housing, but it's still a single family home. It wasn't, it wasn't built. For seasonal employees. Per se, which you would imagine is. Less, uh, architecture, um, on the exterior, not necessarily fitting into an R. A residential zone.
Can I, can I just throw a hypothetical out there?
Yeah.
Um, just, and and I might be wrong, but just from my thoughts on this. Let's and let's just use an existing one as an example, so everyone can picture it, but a property like Fred and Fuzzy's, if that wasn't a resort. And that was just seasonal employee housing, I don't believe that you can actually live in some of those units year round because they don't have. All of the amenities that would, you know, allow someone to live there through other seasons like winter, so that's kind of what my mindset is, is that there's multiple units. You know, seasonal employee housing, that's really only livable for certain seasons of the year here.
And I think almost anything you can, you could repurpose into seasonal employee housing.
Well, both both going Nate and I, I I am on the board of DCDC for the Realtors and they're either appointed or ex officio. Or for their own businesses, I'm, you know, I I am going back to DCDC. Thank you, David, for. Mentioning that I I'm just wondering, you know, considering the problems that we have. If that should be stricken as a conditional use under, under this zoning district, and that's all I'm asking.
And I think monetarily. I'm walking on the edge of my expertise here, but if somebody were to buy land in the B one district. I would think it would be prohibitive to use it for seasonal housing.
It it's not a matter of buying land, you can repurpose an an existing building.
So you could, so you could turn, uh, the Chris property into a gigantic enormous dorm.
If the, if it had all the, you know, necessary amenities to it, potentially as a conditional use, yes.
How about this? Because what what I would be concerned about is. A conditional use basically is a permitted use. And that to build. It seasonal employee housing, you you. It has to be as cheap as possible to build, which means no frills on the exterior. So, and that's, that's the look that I don't necessarily want. On the corridors, so could it? Could we, like we have in other places, seasonal. Employee housing and reference structures that currently exist. As of today's date. Because like, single family homes are are zoned out of downtown Sister Bay, but any single family home. That was there, like the Casperson on such and such a date, they were still. Allowed to be there, but no more could be built, single family homes. Gas stations, my gas station was zoned out. Or I think it might be a conditional use now. That there can be an existing one there on such and such a date, but you don't want any more built in the downtown district. So does that make sense pertaining to what you're talking about, Mary Kay's repurposing something? So if somebody repurposed a building that's already there, whatever it is, yeah, that'd be great.
I was, a- again, I don't really have a good example. I am in agreement with that. Suggestion Denise, I was actually thinking of. Of the house on Clifton, am I remembering that correctly or pronouncing that correctly?
The apartments there?
Yes.
Okay.
And I believe that is in the zoning district, but.
No, that's, that's in, uh. I don't know if that's. I think that's our one.
Okay, then then it changes right after that, so.
Which ones are we talking about? Sorry, I just want to clarify.
The ones that chat that Chris Schmelz was gonna use and Jody Woollett, I don't know if who bought it or whatever.
I think Lars bought it.
Oh, Lars bought it now?
I thought so.
I thought Chris and Jody were gonna use it for employee housing, that's why we gave him a reduction on parking.
Yeah, they did.
Okay.
Chris was in charge of the remodeling.
Right, because there were upper, because Steve used to live there, right, Marge?
Right.
Right, so you, when you walked in the front door, you could go up or you could go down, and I thought they divided those so that they could get. Two into one, is that correct?
That's, I remember them saying that they were gonna make them like two apartments, two different, yeah, um, yeah. That downstairs is huge, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, Chris, Chris owns it, or at least a company that has got the same address as him owns it.
Okay.
Okay, so we would have to get, um. Some appropriate wording, seasonal employee housing. In structure, in in structures that currently exist as of today's date.
The thing I keep thinking about is, well, what if? The Shopko building did turn into that, and that would actually be a pretty great thing, at least it's being used, it's not vacant and.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
That that hook that it's got to be built, it's got to be an existing as of today's date, I think. Makes a lot of sense.
Yep, I do too. I like that.
Good point, Mary Kay.
Yeah.
We didn't just pull that.
Well, it's already got a kitchen, it's already got bathrooms, it's the plumbing and everything is all there and ready to go.
Oh, and you could put bunk beds real high in there, we can get a lot of.
Yeah.
Ten I.
So, do, does anybody remember what storage and related, did we add this, you know? When they built on Bittersweet?
I don't remember.
Because I don't, I I mean, I just, I just don't know what it's referencing. Storage and related.
Yeah, I don't know if there was any code changes on Bittersweet, that was. That was right as you were getting back on the plan commission, Denise, right?
Yes. I think so. I don't think I was part of all the conversation, and I know there were a lot of. There was a lot of conversation for months and months on end about that.
I think, now that you say that, I think that's what that was for.
But why would it say and related? I mean, it's just so.
Because they were, they were gonna have like that meeting room in there.
In the old barn that they made into a party house?
Yeah.
Okay. Which they did a really nice job at, I was, I've been in it once.
But then how do you define that as related? And yes, it is lovely, but I'm, I I agree with you Denise, if you feel that. And related should be stricken at this point from the code and things that exist are good. I wouldn't have any issue with that.
Yeah, it it, nobody would know what that means.
Take out the gray area.
You know. But then again. You know, I guess we have to put storage somewhere, I just. I don't like it anywhere, um, in the village. And so if we, if we look at that section again, sixty-six oh three twenty. G one.
And to interject, the only reason that that was allowed was basically. Act sixty-seven, or did sixty-seven pass in two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and seventeen? I've got it right over here, I'm sorry.
Seventeen, I thought.
I think it was seventeen.
So that was the same year, okay.
Well, there are some pretty tight restrictions on storage buildings as it's, as it reads right now.
Are you looking on page thirty-five?
Yeah. Minimum space would be fifteen hundred square feet, units, non-metal material. They need to contain four more units, or shall not contain more than four units, uh, fake windows need to be installed on the exterior. Setback is two hundred and fifty feet from the center line of the highways. Screened by the, from the highways. There's, there's quite a few restrictions on them.
So, yeah, that's, that's what I was rereading, I mean, that, that's, and I think that's why. That was added to the special standards is because you necessarily could not see it from the highway. And we don't want to see it from the highway. Just because of what, of what they are. So, yeah, I guess they're, they're pretty, it's pretty strict, especially being screened from the highway by other buildings, so that doesn't mean you could just. Plunk one down if you had a really deep lot.
Yeah. I can tell you that I have had some people inquire about storage, but once they read through it and they realize how. How protected the villages with storage that they kind of back off of it.
So, just, just to keep on using Shopko slash the Chris property. What Menards did with a lot of their buildings when they moved is they turned them into storage, so you could. Change Shopko into a storage facility for light items.
Yes.
With those setbacks, I don't know that I disagree that that would be a poor use of the space. So, again, under conditional, if someone could, could fit everything else.
So as long as their storage requirements are are solid, we don't care. Agreed.
Well, as Nate just said, the the setbacks are significant.
Right, okay.
And they're not screened per se, so if that building turned into a giant storage unit, as it reads, it would need to be screened.
Well, not, yeah, but I don't know, it's an existing building, we've been looking at it, if that, you know, if they kept the facade the same. I don't, you know.
It is a conditional use, so you have that discussion.
Right.
Is, is everyone very excited to have something, anything go into that building at some point in time? It sounds like it.
I've had a number of people come to me with plans and that does not pan out, that's all I can say.
Okay, so we've kind of dealt with everything that that was. Related back to that other section, um, flea markets, if we look at that that definition. On one eighty-five. Any premise where the principal use is the sale of new or used household goods. Personal effects, tools, artwork, small household appliances. And similar merchandise, equipment or objects in small quantities in broken lots or parcels, not in bulk. For use or consumption by the immediate purchaser, flea markets may be conducted within, within a structure. Or in the open air. Rummage sales and garage sales are not considered flea markets.
Maybe that brings up a a good point, Denise, in reading that definition, maybe we need to look at the definition of that as well as. Farm market or farmer's market, um, as as they keep expanding with COVID and introducing new products.
I mean, farmers or growers market is defined as a public marketplace where fresh fruits. Foods are sold by the residents of Door County, who have grown, gathered, raised or produced them. Markets where crafts and other items are sold can be eligible. As farmer's markets, as long as the total number of craft vendors does not exceed the total number of farmers. So it's very specific there for a farmer's market are sold by the residents of Door County, and then you go to flea market. And it's wide open.
Can, can you define how you feel it's wide open? Because I think that you have a good definition, we have a good.
I mean, compared, compared, just because if you have a farmer's market, which I think we all think is a great thing. They can only be sold by residents of Door County who have grown, gathered, raised or produced that food. Where a flea market is all this other stuff. That, you know, you could buy, let's say, um. A shipping container, I don't know exactly how it all works, but you know, when, when stores can't sell. You know. All of their product or are going out of business and they've sold everything they can, and then. These different companies come in, just like what happened with Shopko. Um, and they, they come in and buy everything that they, they want. And then resell it somehow, some way, whether, you know, they have. Flea markets, it's independent people that sell, you know, on eBay or Amazon or whatever.
Uh, I just tried to look up craft fair and we don't have that, but I do believe that the quarter of the past is. Advertising what I would consider to be a flea market for the holidays, so I I I do believe that that does. Fit under the definition of same, they may be selling used, uh, Christmas trinkets. Or holiday trinkets. And right now, we we don't have, that would not be a farm market, so, um.
It's a craft market, I would say, Mary Kay, more than flea market.
Or a craft fair?
We don't have a definition for either.
I know we don't, but I just meant, I think what they're, and what they're advertising is a craft fair.
Right, but it would be allowed under the definition of flea market, so if we strike that. I'm not sure that that's specific. I I mean, maybe it would be under a one-time event, I'm sure it's policed by the village in some manner.
So, yes, I think we should come up with a definition for craft fair, seeing that, uh, parks, property and streets gave them permission to have it. And. And maybe we need to. I mean, how, how.
Or do we just amend, or do we just amend flea market? I I don't see how that that is a problem under a condition, under, well, right now it's an allowed use. No, it's a conditional use, I'm sorry, I get confused.
If it was indoors. You know. It talks about newer used stuff. That could be inside and out and or outside, you know. Would we be okay with a flea market? Being set up with, um. Tents, you know, all, all summer, all summer long and different vendors come and go. I'm, I'm just asking. You know, day in and day out. And it's really only outside that, that I question.
Flea markets always, in my mind, I don't think of them as quality places, I don't know. I'm sure it's the name flea that's making me feel that way.
And it is defined as an open air market indoor within a structure, so. Oh, it it certainly does not differentiate where it could be. Um, then again, let's bring up the former Shopko building, what if there was a once a week flea market? Inside, which drew a number of people to the village of Sister Bay.
Inside, I don't have a problem with.
Well, Denise, when I picture flea market, I'll tell you exactly what I picture, and this is maybe where we have to go. I picture the Fine Line Design Studio. Their open air market twice a year, where people can sell anything, or I, or I picture. Mill Road on Fall Fest, you know, that is technically a flea market.
Or a craft, well, but we don't have that definition, but.
I don't, I don't think anyone is trying to compete with resale in any manner, or that.
Oh, I didn't even think about that.
Would be to, you know, compete with something like that. But maybe we should take a look at, at that and craft, craft wear in some manner. And take a look at, at farm market. Everybody loves our farm market. Um, Bailey's Harbor literally, you know, shuts downtown on Sunday with their farm market. And people love it, but it's certainly a diverse selection of items being sold. And the downtown absolutely thrives off of that once a week. Or it used to, pre-COVID, this could all be, you know, moved and we, we could just move on right now until things get back to normal.
Would we say flea, craft, and farm markets as long as they are not year-round? And they are some percentage of time?
Because I know that we, somewhere in the code, and I read it recently and I can't remember where, where it is. And it doesn't say it in the definition. We restricted how many garage sales you could have in a year.
I'm, I'm looking that up because I was thinking about, I think it's.
Because it's six.
Was it, was it six or four?
Okay, I think I read six. And then we also limited sidewalk sales for our brick and mortar to one a month, twelve a year. And that, that's kind of what I mean about flea market being open-ended. There, there's absolutely no timeline on it. And yet, we restricted our brick and mortar businesses, not that a lot of people even do it. Uh, some do it at Fall Fest. I would say that's, you know, the bulk of that, that may have a lot of product outside for everybody here at Fall Fest. And if I can only have six garage sales on my own property, why?
In normal times, Spot has an outdoor rack. I mean, that only came in during COVID. That was outside all the time.
Under, which is just an odd place, but I'm in, I'm on page one hundred and one. It says rummage sales. Rummage sales shall not exceed three days in length or occur more than six times per year and may be conducted in any residential institutional or the B-two district. But I remember there's another part, Janelle, you might be able to help me with this, where so you were allowed up to like twelve events or fourteen events per year, like outdoor sales.
Oh, let me see once.
I know we've been asked this before.
I am pretty sure there is a twelve-event cap, and that might have been a signage thing though as well.
Maybe that was in the B-three district.
Like this. I guess with the restrictions on other things, I guess I would want to be consistent or not consistent if there's a good argument for that.
No, I think it makes sense to be consistent.
You know where it is? Outdoor, is it under outdoor displays?
I'm looking at right now.
Okay. What page is that, Bo?
I'm trying to see, because that's where I'm looking right now. I'm going through sign.
What, Janelle?
One oh seven.
Thank you. So outdoor displays, which are allowed on a regular basis in the B-one district, and do not require a permit. No permit will be required if the owner of a business in the B-one district wishes to display merchandise, which is for sale outdoors, excluding the items included in D, which we'll get to that later. They must satisfy the following requirements. The outdoor display of merchandise shall not extend more than fifty percent from the building into the front setback. Signs, screening, enclosures, landscaping, or materials being displayed shall not interfere with onsite or offsite traffic visibility, including pedestrian traffic. The display area shall not inhibit the use of or number of required parking stalls. Display areas shall be separated from any parking or circulation area, and the separation shall be clearly indicate, indicated. If goods are removed from the display area, all support fixtures shall also be removed.
Also, look at subsection C on the same page, uh, number of sidewalk sales allowed per calendar year. That's what we were discussing earlier. Does no permit will be required for sidewalk sales in any of the business districts, but no more than twelve of such sales will be allowed per calendar year.
So then it, maybe that's our answer. You can't have more than twelve. If you're a brick and mortar and that's all that you can have.
That would be outdoor, yeah.
Yeah, that wouldn't take the, the time when they have, they could be in a structure, but outdoor would be twelve.
Yeah, because if somebody wanted to, you know, own a building and have a flea market, well, that's just inside, that's just retail. Right, you know, but it's, so maybe we need to change it to outdoor flea markets. Because if it's indoor, it's just retail. And, and.
I was just gonna throw this out there. Maybe I'm wrong, but what if you just did subject to zero five zero six subsection C, because that's the outdoor sales?
Okay.
Makes good sense. Well, it's, it pulls it into conformance with everything else. If you check, um, it would be sixty-six oh three oh three sub D. That says that.
What page, Janelle?
What was that?
On page six, it's sub D, like in David. It says temporary uses may be permitted by the zoning administrator and the president for a period of fourteen days.
Yep, that's where I, thank you, Janelle. I was just thinking about this because we had this come up because of COVID.
Yeah.
Someone wanted to.
Or, so four, it says flea markets, concerts, festivals, and outdoor group assemblies. So four on that same page.
I like limiting it to the twelve. And you know what? I don't even know that. I think you should delete subject to sixty-six oh five oh six C, Bo. And the reason why I say that is because it references sidewalk sales. That's not what this is. I think we should just say flea markets limited to.
Outdoor flea markets.
Yeah, outdoor flea market, limited to twelve in a, in any calendar year. If they want to do a twelve days straight, so be it. If they want to do one a month. But then it, then it's consistent with the other.
Like this? Outdoor flea markets limited to
Twelve days.
In any calendar year.
Does that make everybody happy?
No, because it negates the actual definition of flea markets. And flea markets has its own definition, so the outdoor should be moved from the front and to the back part of the sentence.
Flea market is limited outdoor. No, flea markets. Then it sounds like you're trying to.
If it's an indoor flea market, we don't care. There's no.
I, I, I'll just use the Mink River Basin as a, as an example. During COVID, they were using Fridays and their unused dining room as a day to allow vendors to come in to sell goods, and it, it was a needed service. So I totally agree with you on the outdoor stuff, but if it's not in intrusive in any, any way on the indoor, and we already have a definition, I, I think it, it's good.
All right. So we didn't talk about then the other two that have been deleted, motorhome and recreational vehicle sales and service.
Well, we have, we have, my biggest concern with that would have been boat sales, but that's allowed. Boat sales and services allowed, but under this, oh, sorry, I scrolled too far, motorhome and recreational vehicle sales is not allowed.
Because RVs float, don't float where we don't like them?
Well, all I think about is in, as you're on the highway coming into any larger city and Sturgeon Bay's corridor turned into just ugliness with RVs and, you know, all that stuff along that corridor before you, you know, get to Target um, from the south going north. It's just ugly and it's just ugly. And it just, and it broke my heart, you know, when all those businesses went up. And maybe there, you know, you go to Appleton, it's the same thing. You just, you find it on the, the corridor coming into a city. And it's so unappealing and that that's my take.
I'm just saying, I mean, that's the difference between a boat and an RV. Can, can, for at least for the larger boats, is a boat floats and RV doesn't. Or I, I guess I've never tried, but I'm presuming they don't. I would like to try that though, if we could get some money from the village for that.
I don't know, how does anybody else feel?
I guess I don't have a strong feeling about it. I'm just pointing out something that, I mean, I, I certainly think that boats look nicer than RVs, but that's.
Well, boats sort of go with a village that has all the waterfront we do have too, okay, so.
But we also have an enormous amount of roads.
And we now, just on the outside of town, we have a trailer park or an RV park.
That is not within our, our, our zoning jurisdiction.
I know.
I would make sure that you tell people that emphatically.
Is RV just simply limited, and I'm just asking this because I don't think we have a definition for this, as, um, the, the big fifth wheel and monster things that we're all thinking of at dovetail? Or would this include smaller vehicles that may be advantageous to tourism? But at the same time, you can't really ride those on any public roads or on our bike paths, so disregard.
I gotta, I gotta correct you on one thing. Path. It's a single path, a one bike path.
Yeah.
I, I guess in my head, how I would justify this is there's no place to park an RV in the village. We do have a place to put a boat, so I guess this is just an academic argument, but I think it's, I thought it was something worth pointing out.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that there's plenty of highway in Liberty Grove that somebody could find a parcel of property if they wanted to enter that business. Believe it or not.
Of the village, so.
It's not really allowed there either.
Okay.
No one wants them.
Nobody wants them.
Except for the people buying.
Yep, yep, okay. And so then the other, so we're all in consensus that we're just gonna delete that. So then the big one, the last one, residential condominiums.
I agree, they should be taken out.
Any other input?
I'm just thinking, we, we don't want condos, but we'll take apartments.
Condominium is just a form of ownership.
A condominiums tend to be, all the ones that are being built are the majority of them are a single family.
Well, there are some propositions for some single family right now, yes. Um, again, it, it's a form of ownership. If, you know, I'll, I'll go by consensus.
I mean, we do. Do we allow single-family homes in B-one? I don't believe we do.
Yeah, they can be, I believe they're accessory uses.
Anything that was in existence. Isn't it prior to a certain date or is that the B-two?
Yeah, you'd have to scroll up more, not an accessory use, um.
Uh, no, there's no single-family resident, uh, single-family residential housing as of.
So if we zoned out single-family housing, I don't think we should allow residential condominiums. Because condominium is just ownership.
Effective on this state then?
Well, we can just delete it. Whatever there is just there. And just like when we delete, you know, anything else, it just becomes illegal, non-conforming when we change the code. Because everything, um, all of Stony Ridge is R-two, right?
Um, yes, there's a small sliver, and I don't know if it's just because it hasn't been updated, but there's a small sliver on Highway fifty-seven that is, um, B-one. And then there's also another small sliver that is I-one institutional, and I don't know why that is.
Okay, maybe.
We got rid of that I-one. Maybe we talked about it and didn't.
I think you talked about it because it's still, as of twenty seventeen, it's still in here.
So if we don't allow single-family housing, I don't know why we would allow residential condos.
To Mary Kay's point, it's just a form of ownership, so by saying we don't permit single-family homes, aren't we also saying that we don't permit the condos? Because ultimately, that's what the condo is, it's a single-family unit.
Dwelling unit, yep.
But you have a specific date on residences that it was phased out, so do we need that to eliminate the use?
Bo, was that beneficial to put that in there? Because if it is, and it makes it clear.
Yeah, I would.
We could get legal opinion on that too.
I wouldn't like a legal opinion because I could lean either way on this as of right now.
Yeah, I could lean either way too. So make a, make a no. So make a, make a note. Bo, if you scroll up, I know I put about three or four notes. And I can't remember where they all were.
Okay.
I just wanna go to the top.
And I have a question about that, because I went in to amend this document today and put in comments. And my name kept coming up and I kept seeing guest user, guest user, guest. User, do I have to be identified, but other people do not, how how do you not get your name there? So it's just for conversation, so you don't feel so singled out, this is my idea, so it's going through Mary Kay.
I think the guest contributor comes from the email account, so if you don't have an Outlook account, it doesn't identify you.
I was a guest user, it didn't identify me.
Were you logged in through the browser?
Uh, Bo sent it to me in an email and I clicked on the link.
But you 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 were probably using an email client instead of using web browser.
Yeah.
If you go to, uh, what is it, Office three sixty five or whatever, and then log into there.
Okay, yeah, I made some comments too, and I was a guest also.
Yeah, for for those that have the Outlook, and I don't know if everyone here has it, but. Like trustees should have it, but I don't, I think non-trustees may not have that.
Yeah, I don't.
I I just use the online version, because I don't, it's just easier to track everything. And also, if and when something subpoenaed, they can just go into the web account and pull everything from it. I just presume everything I'm going to put into the village email is going to be subpoenaed at some point. It's a better way to look at it.
Think about it.
That's how I think about it for school board too.
Smart, um, Mary Kay, to answer your question, though, I'll look into it and see if we can fix that and give everyone instructions on how to fix that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going down the list here. Okay, so.
There's the first one.
Yep. I'm guessing this is you Denise, it says, should this only be allowed in R4?
Oh, that was just a question.
For seasonal, I think that's for seasonal employee housing.
Yeah, but now that we've changed into existing structures, that can go away, I'm happy with what we did. Oh, well, no, well, we can, we don't have to go to the other ones till we get to them.
Okay.
So, um, okay, so we're done with. So we're happy with what we're keeping. And happy with the changes and what we're deleting, okay.
Okay, so the next thing highlighted is under setbacks.
Okay, so I I put those in, I'm just remembering a conversation we had when we were reviewing. Discussing the proposal in downtown, that wouldn't it be nice if particularly in those. Those side setbacks that they have to be impervious, so I put it in there for discussion.
I love that idea, the part is that the, you know, downtown is so built up already. That the idea of even getting impervious would be almost impossible unless you're jackhammering things out. And I don't know that you can necessarily require someone to do that.
I only did it in the sides in the back, because, but I agree that the front for sure you would do it, but.
No, I think it's great.
How about any new setback area or a date of effectiveness? And I'm going all the way down Bay Shore Drive, because simply every driveway on Bay Shore Drive is encroaching in impervious surface. I can't tell you how many I've had jackhammered out. And I'm thinking about, you know, the most recent planning commission meeting and the one before that where we talked about impervious surface. There there's just a lot of existing blacktop and concrete downtown, I don't know how you. In enforce that unless people are forced to take it out, of which I I don't have any. Real problem with that, but I see that people may.
So I guess there was a, you you just caused me to think about a question, so let's say we make a change like this today. It oh, it applies, so we, it does it necessarily become then retroactive to every business owner?
No, going forward, going forward, the problem is we have so many existing lots. That may transfer as we've had several downtown.
Okay, I get it.
Yeah.
I don't know that we need a date, I mean, because when we change, every time we change the code, we don't put in a date. It's whatever the code is when somebody comes to us.
Okay.
You know, for their project, and if something. So let's say if they wanna change a use and all the blacktop goes to all the property lines. You know, then, yep, then they have to change it. Because I was also thinking about. And I understand why we did this years ago. To the zero side setback, if both parties could agree. And that is when the village was. This was with Bob Cuffrin many, many years ago, probably over a decade. And we were talking about revitalizing downtown. And how Sister Bay, a lot of properties were being underused and we had a lot of missing teeth. Is what they would call, you know, vacant properties, no structures on them, no business on them or whatever. And I think we went to the zero side yard setback when we were thinking that. You know, businesses would be built and they would abut each other. Um, kind of like, uh, Third Avenue and Sturgeon Bay, okay, there is, there is no pathways in between those buildings. They just are built right next to each other, that simply has not happened. So I think moving forward, we need to change that, this is one step for for that. But the building that's going on is not happening with the vision that we thought that zero side. Setback would be implemented, Marge Nate, do you do you agree with my recollection of that?
We did that to to supposedly encourage people to build like that, and it didn't work, it didn't work.
It didn't work. And now we end up with all this other stuff and simply if you go to that zero side setback. There is simply no place for landscaping or water drainage or anything, and I just really feel that that's a problem.
Well, in in B1, I.
A B1 is not, not, I'm much more concerned about B3, yeah.
I think that, while it may not have ended up exactly how we want it. I mean, the the zero side yard setback still takes the adjoining property owner to agree to it, correct?
Yes.
I think we have. I think we should leave it in place, and while it hasn't worked out exactly the way we want to. It's going to take a long time for that to come to fruition, it's not going to end up how we want it immediately, it's going to take. redevelopment of of everything, not everything, but a majority of it before that's gonna happen. Um, where have we seen zero side yard setback in B3, just trying to think of an example?
The only thing I can think of since I've been here was that Al Johnson's retail building, they they didn't do a zero setback. But they did closer for the retail building next to Stabour. And they were the, they were their own adjoining property owners, so they could sign off on that.
Well, I don't think that we should permit, it should either be the six foot setback or whatever the standard setback is, or zero. I don't think you should have something in between, because otherwise you do have a very funny feeling where you've got these little gaps between them.
The only thing I can think of to give you a reason as to why they didn't do that is because of overhangs, because of the way that their buildings are designed. They have those overhangs from the roof, so they can't really do a zero setback, otherwise their overhangs would be hitting each other.
But that's exactly the, the, I think that's the vision that that I had anyway, that you'd have buildings directly next to each other. And those, those are different style of building that aren't gonna have overhangs on the side. So I I think that that, that would be, I would be for amending it to not have it, have it be the the setback or zero setback and nothing in between.
Or should it, or should the. How about, because I thought, had this thought also, that the zero setback should only be. Where the structure is. Not the parking, not the, you know, because the building is not going to take up the entire piece of property. Where they're gonna be zero to zero, they have to have a driveway somewhere with parking somewhere, it can't be in the front, it's gotta be on the side or the back. So should, could the zero setback be then? Just pertaining to the building?
I like that, I think that gets closer to the, what I had in my head.
That's the spirit, yeah.
So then we we wouldn't, okay, so we would need to tweak the zero.
Yeah, that's a B3, so when we get there, we can.
Yeah.
That's that.
Building only, okay. I love it when we have really good discussion.
Denise, I just pulled up a a Pulse article from February twenty seventh and thirteen, when I searched missing teeth.
Yep.
There's, there's a interview with you. Back there, I know Miles did another one that actually, I I remember Marge being not too pleased with that article. Miles did also those twenty eleven or twelve.
Okay, have to check it out, see why I wasn't pleased. Okay, but I still like this for for B1. What David added.
Yeah, you'll see it in B2 and 3 also.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, so I'm gonna leave those highlighted just as we go through them.
Yep, because they were added, yeah.
In case we have to refer to them again. Okay, there's another highlight for minimum of two hundred and fifty feet.
That's DOT, right?
No, this was.
This is the store.
Storage building once, I highlighted that, um, we've already had that conversation, you can un-highlight it.
Okay, the next one is in seasonal employee housing.
So congregate housing gets deleted.
So it just says new apartment in seasonal employee housing buildings shall comply with the building height, is that how you wanted to read?
Sure.
Okay, that's it for B1.
Excellent.
Okay, do we wanna move on to B2?
What time is it?
Seven forty-five.
Oh, we've already been, what time did we start? All right, let's do fifteen minutes, let's get to eight o'clock, let's see, you know. How far we can get with B2, if that's all right for everybody, and we'll cut it at two hours.
Okay, so permitted uses.
So again, I did the same, the same thing. With a lot of the retail, general retail.
Okay, condominium hotel motels and hotel motel condominiums is highlighted.
So this is in the transition district.
I just wanna backtrack Denise, maybe I should have been more forceful in in the last zoning district. When you are cutting all of the retail uses basically to to put them under one. Where is that one, if we can scroll down and see how it's defined, and then is it redefined? Is it redefined under retail general uses as a definition?
Uh, no, but that's a good, um, a good thing, we might have to come up with.
Just a general definition.
Yep, new definition. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, and I was just actually just thinking about that, um, if somebody wants to sell CBD, are we gonna allow it?
I sell CBD.
Okay.
And the answer is yes.
Got it, okay, no, there there was, the the town that I used to have a house in, they they decided they didn't want it.
I actually got an earful about, now, four or five years ago from somebody that had moved from Colorado there with great concerns about it. And I very carefully suggested they talk to President Lino at the time. Right, I think that, that the same thought crossed my mind, David, um, the. When that changes, which I think it's like, going to change certainly in my lifetime, that it's going to be more broad use. It's gonna be, you know, all of THC, I mean, right now you can, you can actually sell Delta eight THC. In the state of Wisconsin, I think that we need to revisit this, but. Who knows what other restrictions are gonna be in place on the state level?
Good point.
I think when the time arises, we just have to have that discussion and be ready for it.
I hope it happens in my lifetime. Couldn't resist. Oh, excellent, Marge.
Just backtracking though, for condominium hotel motels, we have this highlighted.
Okay, so it's in the transition district. And. And because we have just been, because we know what the trend is. And I know we had such a long conversation about the definitions of those. And I know that we currently have one proposed. I don't know, I I I think I would just be happy to. To not allow them, and and I know that's maybe short sighted, small minded. I I don't know what, I just, they have become to me. More of a pain in my rear end than than anything else. And I just, I don't, I don't like the new concept of them at all. If you wanna build a hotel motel, excellent, we welcome you. But with the new format, just. But I will do, I will defer to the majority.
Denise, I guess, I I guess I'm confused, are you talking about the new format that we just worked for like eight hours on? Over the last several meetings, you're not happy with that?
No, 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 the format of the developers of the hotel motel condominium. That it's not Scandinavian Lodge, that it's not Birchwood, that it's VRBO. That that's what I meant by format, not the word.
We just spent a ton of time defining that and doing it, and you could not right now in this climate or economy. Build anything to the, to that scale, I mean, anybody who started something and is lucky enough to be finishing it. The, I I'm. Just, you have, you have no idea what shortages and price increases. We are going like through a weekly rate right now, so, um, I'm hoping that everything that we worked with. Uh, on for so long is okay. I don't think you'll ever see these superstructures in the village of Sister Bay again. And I remember when the Birchwood and the Scandinavian were built, and I was a resident of Liberty Grove at the time. That the 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 village and the surrounding communities were none too happy with those either. Change is hard.
So I didn't, that's why I just highlighted it, I didn't redline it, I just highlighted it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually, I just blew up the zoning map here, so, because I wanna get a better feel for. Yeah, I'm, I'm actually, I just blew up the zoning map here, so because I want to get a better feel for where exactly so, okay. So it's a very small, so. It's also, most of this is in the bluff overlay too, isn't it?
Correct.
So, yeah.
So yeah, it's, B2 is rather small. It, it falls on Spring Road behind Al Johnson's South Spring. And and then around the administration building.
And South Spring is really all wetlands. What exists there probably shouldn't be there in the first place.
Where, I'm not seeing a B2 in South Spring.
North Spring? Or is it south?
Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking North Spring, I apologize.
Yeah, North Spring is, is the one closer to Al's, that's right by Denise.
Very small fragment, just on South Spring, right outside of the R2 multifamily residence. It's just a small.
Oh yeah, it's right across from Timber, oh. Well, that's, there's a hamster, I think. I got it, got it, okay, never mind.
Most of the, most of the B2 district is houses.
So if.
Did that new suite in, is now, how did, are they in the B2 or are they?
They are in the B2.
Yes, and that always was a hotel motel.
Okay.
So what?
Now it's transient employee lodging.
I thought he rented some out also.
He does.
Okay.
He's on Airbnb now, he just came up.
So we would, would we consider that a mixed use then, or?
I can't remember what we actually gave him a permit for.
He just stayed a hotel motel. And I don't think we really need to revisit that. I mean, at this point in time in the bluff overlay, that was definitely existing for decades and decades and generations. The bluff overlay would be, you, you take a very good, close look at that before you'd allow anything new, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Well, in the definition on page 37, the transition district is intended to complement the village's downtown business district by providing a transition zone adjacent to the downtown business district. While the dominant uses in the B2 district are residential, the area is in the process of changing to a mixture of business and residential uses. This transition area is typified by small lots and buildings with minimal setbacks. It's, um, the intent is to permit conversion of existing residential buildings to business uses and to permit the construction of new commercial buildings and to have North Bay Shore Drive remain the primary downtown shopping street. So I guess what I in, have always envisioned, maybe it's just me and I'm stuck in this vision, is that like, what is it Cedar Street and Fish Creek? You know, and all those old homes and stuff that were turned into retail and it's cute and it's walkable. And I mean, that's what I kind of envisioned for that area until, you know, Goki built that, whatever you want to call it. Um, that, that's what I envisioned happening down there. And maybe now because of Goki's building, I, I should re, rethink that vision. I just, I just don't know if that's the greatest place for, for that mix. And, and I'm just not hearing from anybody else, you know, except Mary Kay. And whether.
So I'm going, so looking back, I'm thinking about, so the Goki property, which I'm assuming is the one that Murphy owns now?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
So if I understand correctly from what I heard last year, they're, they can't, they're having a difficult time renting the first floor.
No, there is, there are retail uses going in on that first floor. They're for sale, they're for sale and they are selling, Beau, correct me if I'm wrong.
I have not heard anything over there.
Okay, one is marked as under contract and I had a discussion with Matt Stone because I have someone interested in the other one. And it's my understanding that they both, both purchasers would have an idea on retail use.
Yeah, I have a, but that could be the case.
I apologize, I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn. I'm just stating that if you look at one in the MLS, it would be listed as active contingent. And I talked to Matt and he just simply, because I didn't want two similar uses in, in that space. So I said, you know, it, it, will this be retail? Will this be this or that? And he implied that it would be some kind of a retail use. But again, um, you know, it takes a long time to finish those off. They're not, they're, they're completely unfinished. So there's still quite a while to bring any proposition before planning or the village or anywhere it has to go.
Okay, so with that in mind, I think the vision of having a potential second walking area sounds good if you can get two or three or four people to do it.
Right.
And of course, the one thing we should keep in mind is that even though the lot sizes are small, what would, you know, if somebody just wants to decide to buy, you know, all four properties beside, behind Grassi's and put up a condo, um, that's a possibility. If we're gonna, if we would, so you're saying we would allow a hotel motel but not a condominium?
Yes, because of the format in which they're being built. Nobody wants to be a hotelier anymore. They want to get their ROI from, from building it and.
Get out, right.
And get out, and, um, that, that's my thinking, the, the vision of another walkable, cute, quaint area, it, maybe it'll happen, maybe it won't.
See, I just pictured this B2 district, this area right now. There's so many single family homeowners that live in walking distance to the beach. Most of them rent them out as Airbnbs. I don't see that changing anytime soon.
Not only that, Sister Bay is the only village with a public sewer and public water. So housing and lodging is always going to be in the highest demand. Um, it, it won't be retail.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I guess that I would be in favor of striking it.
I agree.
I would also be in favor of striking it.
Same.
But we're going to allow a hotel motel with all of their unique problems? I, I almost think that you have to strike both.
I'm much more comfortable with, with having one owner running a property, not 10.
But Denise, again, this would be an allowed use, so it, it wouldn't be a conditional use. I don't think you can strike condominium hotel motel, which is again, just a form of ownership. And you just reiterated that, one owner as opposed to 10 owners. Um, I've, I've seen many hotel motel condominiums that are way better run than hotel motels. And I'm specifically thinking of the Fish Creek area.
But it, you know, it just, it just goes back to, you know, that it's all just off-site owners, VRBO. I know that we came up with that wording where there has to be somebody on site, whatever, and maybe that's appropriate in, well, I just don't like it, period. I just, I just don't like the concept at all anymore, and that, that's all I'm going to say.
I, I think it's been pointed out though, that we really don't have the infrastructure or land to allow a hotel motel is defined. So almost out of necessity, you'd have to strike that as an allowed use.
Yep. I agree.
In the B2.
In the B2, if you're only talking about B2.
Exactly, that's all I'm talking about, this specific zoning district.
It's such a small area.
I think we should strike it in B2.
Well, I don't know what's going on here.
Okay.
Okay, well, that puts us over eight o'clock Denise, just so you know.
Okay, um, could, uh, do we have any other questions? Can you just scroll down to the rest of the? Okay, so basically that's, everything else is the same. There, I don't think that there was any other big debates over keeping something or deleting it. Um, so yeah, so we can pick up on, on conditional uses in, in B2 then next time.
Can we start with liquor stores? Because I just have a question on how that isn't just a simple retail use if we struck tobacco stores. At the next meeting.
Oh, we can do that, that's, that's not a big deal.
Okay, I'm going to leave it highlighted as.
Oh, no, 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 this was because it was in B2, where there were a lot of, um, I didn't, I didn't strike liquor.
It, it's just highlighted.
Oh, I, because I wanted to have a conversation, I guess, about that, so.
It's a good place to start next time.
Sure, yep, oh, as a conditional use, yeah, yeah. Okay, perfect. So, um, all right. Thank you, everybody, that was really good. Really good conversation. Um, I'll make a motion that we adjourn at 8:05. Motion by Berto. Second, second by Ward. All those in favor respond with an I.
I.
Carried, when is our next meeting, Beau?
Um, I can tell you, we have one skip. It's next.
May 11.
Okay. All right.
I have three Zoom meetings that day.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I had two today and that's about.
That's enough.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, bye, everybody.
Everybody.
Thank you.
All right.
Janelle, thanks for your help today.
Oh, no big deal, see ya.
Yep.